And welcome. Welcome to the August 6th meeting, 2024 of the HPARB. This is a special meeting. And I'd like to start the meeting with a salute to the flag. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all.
So this is a continuing public hearing on the application for four properties on Marsden Street. I want to discuss each of these presentations individually, if we would. I think that's the best way to go about it. And so who's here to present? Please come up, identify yourself, and let's start.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Denise Schorn. I'm the attorney for the department. As the chairman indicated, this is a continuation of a public hearing for a certificate of appropriateness for four properties on Marsden Lane in the historic district, the village of Sag Harbor. The application is to approve those properties with a single-family residence, swimming pool, accessory. Well, detached garage. We don't have Google anymore right now. I'll talk as loud as I can. Detached garage and a pool house or pool building, depending on which property that we're looking at there. The, the first one that's on the agenda for tonight is Seven Marsden. So I thought I would start there. I was going to see if Carrie would pull up first the survey of the property.
Okay, she stepped back.
She'll be right back.
No worries. Should I keep going? I can give you some.
Something else.
Yeah, you can give us a summary of where we are.
So for Seven Marsden, this property is, it comes off of a common driveway off of Marsden. And the intention is for this to be the property owner's residence in Sag Harbor. So this will be built for a family. The, the applicant did appear before you and reviewed this application with you. And you did have some comments which they've incorporated over. This property is 0.78 of an acre, 33,803 square feet. It's approximately 260 feet wide along Marsden. The proposed building coverage is 2,485 square feet, which is 12.65%, where the maximum lot is 20. The total coverage is 7,263 square feet, which is 21.49% or 25% is permitted. All of the other aspects of the application are within zoning limits. There are no requested variances for any of these properties. This particular home has been rotated so that it has an entrance off Marsden. Originally, I believe the houses were all sort of facing the common driveway. You had a request which we agreed with that it made sense for the properties to have their entry facing Marsden so that there's more of a relationship between buildings and the street. The setback for that house is 34 feet from Marsden. We have had the grand trees marked out on the property. And on this lot, we have, I believe, one grand tree that we can keep. There are eight grand trees on the property. Out of those eight grand trees, we can keep seven of them. One of them happens to be in a building I'll load about 100 lots, which I'll show you when we get to that property. The materials on this house, cedar shingles, cedar roof, color gray, blue shutters, height 32 feet, where the maximum is 35. As far as the plans, I was going to recommend pulling up a, I think it's 5.9, which is the elevations. I think that might be the most helpful for the board and for the audience as well to get an image.
Right.
Seven, right? That's correct. Just to get a view of what the proposed house looks like. The gross floor area on this one is 4,703 square feet, which is also within the maximum limits. I, what I did was I prepared a chart, which I'll hand up to the board and submit to the record on Marsden Street, setting forth the existing and proposed houses, giving you the lot area and then also giving you the percentage of the lot that the gross floor area actually takes up. So it can give you sort of quantitative, you so to speak, of, say, actually, of the house's total percentage. On your, on your personal email. As you will see, we're on Seven Marsden number one. Lot size 35,903 square feet, GFA 4,703. It creates to 13% as a percentage. So comparing the GFAT to the lot size, 13% of the lot is being taken up with GFA for the house. If you look at the rest of the properties on this comparison sheet while we have it in front of us, the ones that are highlighted are the ones that are pending before you tonight. They're all 13%. The other two, one is Eight Marsden, which is an existing residence that has been there for many years. That one is at 23.4%. The GFA, there is 4,752, but the lot size is 10 acres. So that's the reason why the percentage is different. The other one is Twelve Marsden. You may recall I appeared before you approximately a month or two ago on this one. And the gross floor area for that one is 5,285 square feet. Lot size 33,777 for a GFA percentage of 15.96. That is A5, I believe, nine is where the, yes. So that's where the elevations start in the plans. As you can see, we're using traditional cedar shaped shingles.
There, we have the same view.
Oh, that'd be good.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So as you can see, we've used traditional cedar shaped shingles. This house, we are painting them sort of gray with blue shutters. And this again is the residence that hopefully our client will reside in with his family. I believe the only difference in the elevation that you're seeing today is an additional window that we added next to the front door. So that sort of circular, sort of nautical window there was added since the last time you saw this. All of this is within pyramid, meet setbacks, and of course, this is within GFA limits. Scroll down a bit. This is the right sided elevation, the east side of the house. So this would be the side facing the common driveway. So if you were coming off the common driveway, you would have an entryway leading to that door there. If you wanted to go right on the side of the house with your groceries or, you know, your stuff from the beach, whatever, whatever you're carrying in your car. And then there's a, a deck on the back. But again, no privacy issues here. Once again, we have large properties. We won't impact any neighbors with that, that out for us for second story deck. You could scroll down.
Sorry, just to clarify, the, the front elevation is on Marsden and the other one is the
It's on the driveway.
Main driveway, I said.
That's right, yeah.
It faces the school.
Faces the school potentially, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right. This is the rear elevation, so that would, you know, that would be presenting toward the common boundary line with the property behind us. So that's what the neighbor would see from, from their property if they could see in. But when we get to the landscape, you'll see that we have green giants, a lot of evergreen vegetation that will shield the view between the neighbors. That's in addition to the pollinator species that we added as well. Scroll down. And then this is the left side elevation of that house. So this would be facing a neighbor on the other side. I'll make a bar right now. I think that might be the last elevation.
Well, I think you know that we've received a lot of letters. People have a lot of opinions about this. And we'll get to invite the public to speak in a moment. Does anybody either of you want to comment? Or Judith, if you're in touch with us, is she connected in?
Judith isn't on yet.
Okay.
We should let me come her way. She says she's working.
Ah, good.
The only additional document I have for Seven is I wanted to do an addendum to landscape plan just so that you guys can see what the plants, the pollinator species actually look like.
Maybe part of me, I think you said the GFA is, I guess, 4,700, but the, I think you got, you know, the property itself is 2,204 feet. But what's the square footage one that you mentioned? I wanted to reconcile numbers in my head.
Off the side like this one is
43.
About 1,000, not 3,000. And by the first floor area, I've got lots, I should say, 40%. And so with the landscaping plan, you'll see that we've added cherry trees, the green giants for screening, butterfly bush, drift rose, some hydrangea, privet, magnolia, a lot of trees that I know that the board likes to see, the bushes that the board likes to see to attract birds and bees to the property.
I know we're taking this one at a time. I'm just curious, is this design being repeated again and again?
No.
Not at all.
No, no, they're all different.
Okay.
I would like to compare the entrance, the entryways.
Sure.
We've got the front, if you go back to what we were looking at at the beginning.
Do you want to look at the elevation then?
Yes, please.
So A5, nine. Somebody scroll up, A5, nine, she said. Yeah, so it's just one page up from there. That's the right side elevation there.
Right.
And that's
Yeah. So this is the, this is the entry from the side, right? And then this is the main entrance up here.
The top is the main entrance.
Yes, the main entrance at the top. Yeah, that's the front.
That's correct.
When I look at them, I almost think that the one on the side is, is almost, yeah, is like more, I want to, do I say elegant? Or whatever. And where the, I almost think they should be switched, the, the plan, or
So maybe rather run the entry left smaller than
It's, it's what's around it, I think, that it goes to my eye.
Yep.
You see what I'm saying? You see what I'm saying, my friend?
I think we, I mean, I think what you're, you're pointing to is the horizontal nature of the front on the top means that the first impression of the home is one of mass, right? It's just, it's a very large presence when you first look at it versus the, the side view is more akin to the kinds of views that you see for houses in the rest of the, in the rest of the community.
Yes.
There's a
I, I just feel like, maybe if we zoom in on the front door, on the front entrance. Can you zoom in on that?
Here.
Zoom in on the front door. So it's, it's got the, it's got lights on one side, right? And then it has one I don't know, column, thank you.
The column.
One column there on the
Well, it's got a porch.
Yes.
So the, the column that you see in the front is matched by the corner column on the front. So it's the front porch that I think you're seeing on this.
Right, I got you. So then if we go to the side entrance.
Side elevation?
Scroll down.
Yeah, just one. I'll give you directions. And then if you could zoom, oh, no, too far, buddy, come back, come back.
Just the bottom half of the first page.
And then zoom in there to that door. It looks like two columns.
Yeah, it is.
And it's the, what I, my point, I think, is, is that the, this looks more fancy, or however you want to say, like, like it would have been the prime entrance, not the front. That looks more like, not the door as much, but definitely having the, the two columns.
So, so what you're saying is that this profile, so the reduced mass on the street, if you're looking at it from the street.
Well, you would look at this from the driveway. That, that's my point, is that this is the, the side door.
Right.
But to me, it looks, it's more fancy, or however you want to say, than the actual front entrance, right?
Do you want to dress down?
Either that or, yeah, I guess, or maybe the, the, I don't know, like, to me, it was like, whoa, there we got the two, two columns. And on the other one, and I understand it's because of the, but it just needs to be, I don't know, fancy, don't believe it, if you compare them. But if, if everybody else thinks it's fine, I'm good.
So Carrie, can we first?
Yes.
Can you scroll back?
I'm not voting yet, please.
Just to the top of half of the page?
Yeah.
So I think what you may be reacting, the, the porches, the width of the door and the two windows.
I think even if we had, if they had a slide light on the other side to match the one that's there, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not proportionate.
That's what I'm saying, it's like
It's out of proportion.
That's what just catches me.
Okay, so, so for me, when I look at this, and if you scroll back, like, not scroll, just take a step back, but, yeah, so unzoom.
You need to go back.
That's the word.
Oh, yeah, bring it back.
Great.
There you go.
Yeah. So when I look at the front view of this, my immediate reaction is the, the length of that as the front of the house means that the impression that one gets from the street is one of a significant amount of mass, right? Therefore, it gives the impression that it's just a really massive house versus could we achieve the same thing by potentially shifting it sideways such that the side view is the view that points to the front of the house, to the Marsden Street, so that the impression that one gets is more akin or more sensitive to the other homes that are in the rest of the village? So that it, the, the first impression is not one of, oh, it's in, it's big, but rather it's, to use your word, elegant, maybe, fancy, right? It's just, it's proportionate to the other types of homes that we see in the rest of the community.
The house next to it, we switched.
Yep.
So I wanted to have them different.
I see.
So one is
Is wide and the other one is narrow.
It's only 62 feet, where the property is almost 200. So it's, it's, if you came to the site and saw the vastness of the property, this is not going to look massive at all.
We actually did have
Can you come up, can you guys speak? Just because I don't think it's going to be recorded unless you're like right near that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Hi, um, hopefully. So what we did was we turned the other one on your advice.
Right.
And I think it looks nice, the other one. But I didn't want two houses next to each other looking the same. If you look through the village, very rare do you have two houses looking so similar next to each other. So I wanted to have them totally different. So that's why I did that.
I mean
I said, if you look, if you maybe want to come to the site with me, you'll see it's 200 feet long. And 60 feet is not, uh,
Yeah.
not big at all. It's going to look, it's not going to look tremendous at all.
And it is a back 30, 40 feet from the front property line. And I believe the elevation of the roof is higher than where the house will feel.
This is the, this is the elevation. Can we go back to the drawing?
The
Of the front, yeah, the rendering. Yep. And honestly, when you were, when, I mean, I might be mistaken, but when you came, this house, when you first planted it at the first time, that house was not facing Marsden. You had, and then at, at the request of, of a board member who wanted it not to be on, or not, felt that the, the two in the front should be facing Marsden and then the ones in the back could be facing each other. And that's how we got here.
That's correct.
Yes, yeah, that was definitely one of the board's comments.
Yeah. So I don't know, so I look at it here, I it doesn't look that huge. Of course, I know it's a render.
There's, there's a setback on the right-hand side there that this is not showing, but it's in, it's, it's in the elevation. There are two additional windows kind of set back over this, over the other porch. Or in prox, oh, yes, over the other porch on the side. I think that's the difference. This looks a lot shorter.
A bump out on that side, yeah. You can sort of see a little bit of it on the right-hand side, but the, the angle of this, it, it makes it look, diminishes it.
So I, I think, I think we're getting, going in the right direction in terms, in terms of the fact. You know, I do want to see a site plan because it'll give us some context. Do you have a site plan for, plot plan? I'd, I'd like to see that because that'll give us some context, is how you're arranging these houses.
Oh, you know, I have one that I've all worked on it too.
That's what I'm looking for.
Which maybe even better to look at.
Thank you.
The other thing that I might say is the windows that are set back, like, I don't know. You're not even seeing it because links they think will be covering it. So you're only going to see what she showed you.
So 15 is like what you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's like originally this plan.
Right.
So you're suggesting that 15
I think that when I came away, well, I came away last time, that's what I thought was, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that it would be this way.
But I, I'm not it'll be interesting to see. I mean, we can see it here, but it would be interesting to see it as a, again, after we check each one out. Right and slowly, then we could say, wow.
Well, it's almost as if these two here on Division kind of turn their back to Division, which is unusual. Most houses face the street back there.
It's far enough away from Division. It, it's that, because of, because it's the Marsden address.
Right. But it's the topography of that.
Okay. Do we have any other comments? Oh, that's great, thank you.
Yes, that's the landscaping plan, the site.
Set a pond?
Cool.
For this property. So Marsden here up front, S3.
It's a tree, isn't it, the tree of the gray, yeah.
It's the driveway. Sorry, sorry, we were just trying to figure out what the, what those were. Apologies.
And there's one grand tree in the sort of corner, you know, where it makes a little triangular bump out, rectangular bump out there. Because where the grand tree is on that lot, so that will be sort of
Oh, my gosh.
Say one, three, four. Uh, there are a whole property, they, I have been
Let's do Marsden address too. They just right, we have the last public this year.
Yeah, absolutely. So this X is the tree that's going to be removed?
That's right, that's one I think probably
I don't know, I think, we can't get this up. I don't know, we can circulate some of these to the public. But I think what we should do is take comment on number seven before we go ahead.
Right.
So is there anybody who'd like to comment? Please come forward. Hi.
My name is Dawn. I live somewhere. Sorry. Somewhere, I live in proximity to Marsden Street, proximity. I still would like to talk about the density of these projects. One by one, they seem to fit in, they seem to meet all the parameters. When you multiply it by five, because 12 is also on the street, on the very small street that we're talking about, the density explodes. The average square footage of the homes in the area, the nearest vicinity, is about 2,400 square feet. Yes, there's a 5,000 square foot home, maybe two, maybe three, but they are not one after another after another in a very tight, small street. And again, you know this, we know this, that this is the Sag Harbor Historic District. It's shocking, it will look like something has just been dropped in. One by one, they fit in. One times five, I'm sorry, I'm very worried about Sag Harbor. Thank you.
Anybody, please come forward.
Hi, Elizabeth Gil, we're 19 Atlantic Avenue, speaking on my own behalf. I'm curious as to why SECRE has not been invoked in this case.
SECRE was done at the planning board level when it was subdivided.
When was that?
I don't know, before my time.
1985.
Yes, the SECRE was done
85. 85.
And here in state DEC has determined that the, the development of a parcel with a single-family residential dwelling and accessory structures is a type 2 action under SECRE, you can look it up if you want to. And therefore requires no further environmental review.
But
So it's designated by the state what gets studied and what doesn't.
Understood, but you should four separate plots that are essentially constitute a subdivision.
No, it's not a subdivision. This is a development of individual lots. This is not, the subdivision was already reviewed and approved by the planning board of the village of Sag Harbor years ago and filed with the county accordingly. That's what happens.
Okay, and that was 15, like, almost 50 years ago?
1985.
1985?
God.
Forty.
1944. Or 44 years ago. The climate's changed, in case nobody's noticed, since then. And although it has gone through SECRE 44 years ago, and I know that that's not the purview of the board, sent necessarily, just maybe keep that in the back of the mind. I'm going to be one of the recipients of the runoff from Marsden once it's leveled. So, and eight trees are left standing. And I also question, the eight trees, is that eight trees on the entire property? Or eight trees on the specific plot of land?
I think we can circulate one of these, two of these through the audience because we don't have this up on the screen. So would you mind taking it? It's a little tough for me to get up. Thank you.
To Carrie.
Thank you.
And on each side of the
Anyway, that's, and plus the house looks curved. And it's being plopped down in the middle of the historic district. You said there's no other, there's no other reference to what's going on around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Please come forward.
Guy Davis, I am a resident of Sag Harbor Village. I just want to state I am pro this development. I think this lot needs to be developed. It's kind of an high-sorted town. It's been defunct for a long time. I believe their building are nice quality homes. And I just want to say I am pro this project.
Do you live in the vicinity? In the village, but not near the site?
No, I live off a church.
Okay.
Okay.
There one comment about turning that front house sideways. I, I disagree with that. Because I think that when you turn it sideways, the second floor deck is bedrooms. You're going to be looking into the driveway, the house should face towards the back. Maybe your comment about the front door, maybe the door should be shifted a little, or the side light be moved, because I can see where it's throwing your eye off. If you look at the door and you look to the second floor, you want it to line up. So the door maybe gets bigger or shifts over, but I think it should stay facing the way it should. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come forward.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Pat Trunzo. If you know, you've moved my application for lot twelve across the street from these four lots. Um, if I can, I would just want to speak generally, uh, rather than to the specifics so much. Uh, and if you'll indulge me for less than sixty seconds, I'm going to give you my perspective, or where my perspective comes from. So when I was twelve years old, I had a paper mill in Sag Harbor, celebrating the afternoon paper. So, made my bicycle, traveled quite a few streets in Sag Harbor. And because my father was a builder, I also looked at the architecture of the houses on those streets. And if you will, my view is your job is contextual. Your job is to try to make sure that what gets built or renovated fits in on the street that it's proposed for. And I think that's.
Where is that hand? I want to hear.
Sag Harbor is its own street. I mean, certainly Marsden is its own street. It's really not Madison Street. It's really not Division Street, just like Palmer Terrace is its own street, and of course, Main Street is its own street. And even Love Lane and Gary Road are their own streets. So, if you look at what was getting to you earlier, yes, these are remarkably, they, they, they get lots and they're going to be a build lot. But I think the houses that are proposed, just like the houses that you just approved, and just like number eight Marsden, you know, they're all similar, they're all of a similar size. So. Other houses on Madison, they're smaller, yes, because probably the lots are smaller. I know most of the houses, most of the lots on Madison are a quarter of this size. And so, houses bear a kind of a natural relationship with the size of the lot that they're proposed for. And I think that's something that you should just say, that's appropriate. So, that's the main thing I wanted to share with you. I don't have a problem with proposed size of these houses. And that's because, not because I'm going to build one, but because these are large lots for Sag Harbor. And they'll fit very comfortably on these lots. So, I hope you.
Well, you mentioned contextuality, and, and thank you, but I mean, that's, we do understand what our responsibility is, but, but there is, there is the village, and, um, in terms of this, because you have a large lot, doesn't mean it needs to all be cleared. It doesn't mean that your house has to be prominent, maybe just, just the contrary, that your house can be um, less imposing. So there is still context here, and, um, it's subjective. We are the HOA Sag Harbor Village, in addition to being, uh, the, the historic preservation. So.
HOA, homeowners association?
Yeah, this is pretty much where we tell people how, how they can build things, how it can fit into the village, its character, et cetera, et cetera.
Look, that's true.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not debating you. Excuse me, I, I allowed you to finish.
It didn't come through.
I allowed you to finish. So, so there is a subjective sort of side to this. You're absolutely right. But there, we're hoping that through this conversation, we can reach, you know, consensus and agreement. That's all we're doing.
I, I appreciate that, and I applaud that.
So thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Hi, board. My name is James Peyton. I'm a resident at twenty-six Jermaine Avenue. I had the pleasure of working with you about two years ago, working on my own property, which is a fairly prominent site, and also a larger property than most of the properties around us. Um, we came to a great consensus, um, together after a few rounds. And seeing what Matt's doing here, and walking, driving that area on a daily basis to my son's school, I think that the size and scope of the lots compared to the homes that they're doing are very flattering, very much to the neighborhood. Um, I think it really is in blend with what's created there. I think he's worked, and I've seen the preliminary designs to really incorporate your ideas from last time. Uh, I think that, um, any more suggestions, as long as in the line that they're working on, I think it beautifies the area, and I think it will fill in very nicely. So I am pro of his designs there, and hopefully you'll see your way to, uh, agreeing above.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw other hands.
And we have three on Zoom too.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, my name's Claudia Rankin. I'm a resident from the village on Suffolk Street. Um, I happen to very much appreciate this process. I think it's so important that a town like this does this, and that you come and give your time. So thank you very much. Um, I have often felt that this piece of land was, um, um, kind of lacking the, the, a Sag Harbor feel to it. So I'm glad that someone is developing on this property. I'm very much pro in what they have put together, because it seems very thoughtful. I, I like the way there's a cul-de-sac where, you know, where you can go around, and that the houses are not facing all of the other streets. I think that was a great call. Um, and also the symmetry on the front of the house, so that it would feel a little more elegant or Sag Harbor-like. So I'm pro the project. I wish you luck, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just remember, we got three more projects to look at, but come on up, please.
Um, I'm John Oppenheimer. I live across the street from this proposed house. And I thought it was an interesting comment to have it on its side. I mean, it's a big house, looking at it. I'd rather look at the side of a house, which is smaller, and maybe there's a way to distinguish the two neighboring houses so that they're both on the side, but that they can be somehow distinguished from each other. Um, so then the, the bigness of the houses will be faced by the people actually live there, you know, interior. Um, second is, I don't quite understand the secret, because we went through with the proposed soccer field, through the community preservation funds, Southampton Town, we all know that it was a village, unofficial village dump at one point. There were ice houses there. Uh, the street floods on a heavy rain, we live there all the time. Um, it seems like it's kind of backwards. You know, you're trying to, you're, you're approving something, but we don't know if it's actually uh, buildable with flooding and all that. Has that ever been looked at to see what impact the change in the, in the type of house will have on, on flooding? That's.
I mean, basically, basically Marsden Street is a rain garden now, right?
Right.
So, I mean, you have all your water come down there, whatever can stay stays and filters down. This is going to change it. It's going to put hardscape on it. And therefore, you're going to, you, I'm sure, an experienced builder like we have here has considered those sort of things, infrastructure, so.
Their drainage on-site.
Right.
To keep their retention of, of rainwater on-site or drainage and everything on-site. But the SECRE is a different issue. SECRE is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and it's triggered statutorily when an action is classified. The subdivision was an unlisted action that required SECRE review. These are type-two actions, because the development of a single-family residential dwelling accessory structures on a single-insetment parcel, that's, that means zoning, right? So it's not an unlisted action, it's a type-two action designated by the state. So it doesn't require a further environmental review by this board before it acts. That, in fact, all single-family residential dwellings, the development of houses are typically type-two actions. Unless there's some other triggering, um, thing in the code, which is not the case. So, that's the distinction, sorry.
Curating board members. A forty-one-year resident of the East End, and thirty-two of those years I have lived adjacent to this property, three houses over on my two nineteen Madison Street.
Please give us your name before you continue, sir.
Val Florio.
Okay, thank you.
I speak to you not as a former board member, nor current zoning board member, but as a resident and future neighbor of this gentleman here. Um, in terms of commentary, I think that the, this of the four houses seems to have, uh, greater merit. However, do you have comments? Just in terms of the front elevation, if you could go to that, please. I'm not sure if you could take the look. The. There is a simplicity to Sag Harbor's architecture. And in terms of just the massing, there's gables. We have a house here with what appears to be these little doghouse accomplishments. And it's something not necessary. I, I find the less is more. Um, it's like a simple elegance to these houses. I'm not sure the width of the house, if that includes the two bookends on either side. However, as you had pointed out, there's a cadence to the house, this new village, where front door relationship to the street, there's something about that where in this instance, you lose that relationship, because this is a one-off property in terms of, there's a disconnect here. It's not a subdivision, and it doesn't have a cul-de-sac. It's independent flat lots to an independent lot. So I like what the board is doing here in terms of individual analysis of each parcel. So in looking at this in context, you could say that this house sets the tone for the others. I have comments about the other houses, which I'll reserve, but I would pick up on the positive aspects of this. If you walk from the top of Jermaine, as you head down Division, there's gables, gable, 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 gable. That's the look of Sag Harbor, and it's also a smaller scale. Um, as I've seen this iteration evolve, you know, the scale of the house is lower. Yes, it's a large house, but as Mr. Trunzo presented initially, they were large. I think he's reduced at least by twenty-five percent. It could have been seven thousand plus. So he scaled them back. Those three houses on Madison Street, as you head to the outskirts of the village, and they present themselves as big, because they're right in your face. This little enclave is, is lower. If you stand at the base of Marsden, your head is below street level, Madison. So the massing scale has been reduced. In terms of comments that the board had of the front porch, these things tend to have a little bit of forgiveness, you know, with center. But as I said, with the simplicity of a house, you look for alignment, you look for windows that stack, you don't look for chaos. A lot of the federal-style houses have that very simple, just pure geometry. They feel balanced. Um, this of the four that you'd be presented with has a single gable in the street. It, it's not fighting, you know, they don't have two drawn gables.
Right.
It's, it's looking more like a McMansion-type house. Farmhouse elegance. Not that this is a farmhouse, but that vernacular is much readily or more acceptable than a horrible Bridgehampton subdivision. So, again, this is not a subdivision, it's a single lot. He's done his best, I think, to make the roadside presence, you know, be in context with the street. As I said, it, it's not like Madison, or Division, or Main Street, where there's front door, front door, front door, and there's a cadence. You can break that cadence here, but he's respecting, you know, this is the way it fits on the property. I looked at this as a, an architect, could this house be spun? It's tight. There's not much room to work with in terms of this pool or the cabana. Um, last comment is, if you look at the rear of this house, like Sagaponic, we had a policy where second floor balcony can be an intrusion on neighbors' privacy. Stephanie Louise, who lives to the west of this house, it's a private backyard, and I would think that in, as we look at these projects, consider what this could do in terms of, you know, does that impact that neighbor? She can't be here, she's homebound. And this is something where, you know, I think as a board, you should kind of respect that, you know, sense of privacy. Yes, this is a nice feature to have. It's not Sag Harbor, and maybe it could be a porch, I'm not sure. But I think in terms of starting out, as it relates to the road, back to the front elevation, the doghouse hood ornament type dormers are not serving no purpose. Maybe it could be a shed roof dormer, but other than that, I have no comment. I think that of the four houses I end up looking at, this one sets the tone. And I think in terms of material, it's simple and it, it's characteristic neighborhood, especially newer homes, which are built here, nonhistoric. But again, it's the shape, massing of the house that looks appropriate. When we get to the others, I'll have more comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very instructive, but I, I want to say this, that uh, I've been serving on this board a number of years now, and, um, got a lot of letters about mass, right, and about why are the houses so big now? And, and you know, we might have built houses with eight-and-a-half-foot ceilings per floor, and now they're twelve and fourteen feet, and this one's, uh, thirty, thirty-two feet?
Yeah.
Would you think of any consideration maybe on lowering some of your ceiling heights?
We did lower it from the first one. We lowered it sixteen inches.
Sixteen inches.
We're allowed thirty-five feet according to code, so it did come down significantly from thirty-five to thirty-two. And again, it's not impacting any neighbors, as far as this comment would be. Back porch also doesn't, it's just far enough away. And with the landscaping there, you're not gonna, they're not going to see each other.
Can I just ask a question, perhaps, um, perhaps of you? Uh, one of the comments that you made was that the street level is higher than in elevation than where the house is going to sit. And what I was looking at on this, um, on this survey is that the front of the house is at twenty-two feet, is that right? I'm just looking at this, the, the survey that you have. I'm sorry, I was just asking. Am I, am I right in thinking that what, what I'm sort of reacting to or trying to understand a little bit is if the, if the street level is parallel to the base of the house, and therefore the visual um, representation of the house itself is on the same level, that's the concern around mass. But am I hearing you correctly in that the property itself is lower than street level, and therefore the mass, the mass structure is, I mean.
If you were looking at the intersection of this street with Madison, as you stand there, it would be a minimum of a ten-foot drop to get down to, as it goes downhill. This house is a little closer to the ride. This house is a little closer to the rise, but that's an important consideration because if you play with height, yeah, presence of your street, you're looking at that elevation, this is a steep roof line. And if the board felt that, you know, it would be reasonable thing to ask, say, drop that pitch a little bit, take the house up to thirty feet. That's something you can do, but it does have ten foot ceiling first floor, it does have nine foot ceiling second floor. Something which we don't always see in a Sag Harbor home. But this is the, by far, out of the many iterations that have been before, it has the uh sort of look that's least um, you know, busy. Um, I could say maybe better organization of a window that you point it out the front door. But uh, in turning the house, you know, all the other houses go the other direction. There's a reason why he did that. When you get to the each property, you'll see. Um, in terms of flooding, every house here is designed for a minimum of a two inch per hour rainfall. So it's going to handle the water that's coming into the street. It's not going to cause more, there's no hardscape here. There's grass and there's trees and they're going to soak it up. But the applicant needs to show dry wells and dry wells are going to handle roof runoff. So it's not going to contribute more. Um, what I would like to see possibly since I've raised my children here, have three who are in their thirties now. Sidewalk, maybe this feel perhaps part of the community, not something that's an obligation for the applicant, but you could do that. Possibly something in the village to be said, right? Yeah, yeah. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, can I just, I think you were going to respond to your, to the question, I think you were going to respond to.
What I was saying is as far as your height, what I, what he was trying to say is Division is high, Madison is high, Marston is shaped like this and we're at this bottom part of it. So, but, but when you stand on Marston in front of it, they're going to be level. But when you're looking from the sides and you're walking down that street as you go, you're going to come from on top of the house and come from on top of the house. So then you're actually going to appear, I think, smaller eh, because you're coming from a high vantage point and a high vantage point. As far as the uh, water and everything, like you were saying, all the properties have to have the right amount of dry wells, which is not, I know this is the building department, but they make sure we put enough that all of the water on each property stays on that property. It doesn't run off anywhere.
May I ask a question? What, what is the um, material of the roof?
Cedar.
It's cedar.
Yeah, cedar shingles.
We still have five people on this room.
Oh, oh yeah, sorry, I forgot about the people on. Does someone want to raise their hand?
Catherine?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Um, I didn't, I didn't hear you. Um, I I just want to um, say that I appreciate the detail that you're going into about each of these houses, but we have to see them in aggregate. Because this to me, as someone who lives on Marston and Madison, I'm sorry, I'm Catherine Levy. Um, someone who lives on Marston and Madison, this looks like a suburban development that belongs, if it belongs anywhere on the East End, on those flat fields of Sagaponic. It is going to fundamentally change the character of this part of the village and I would argue the village as a whole. And we have to um, address the topography, which is, um, except for what Val just said, basically being ignored here. The renderings I'm seeing are depicting houses built on flat land. Well, I mean, I hope everybody on this board has walked or driven up and down Marston Street. It is a gully. Um, and there's going to have to be significant change in the topography of the area to create the kind of flat land for these massive buildings that the builders are envisioning. And there is going to have to be a massive retaining wall. And some of us who were involved in studying this area closely during the debate about the Pearson Sports Field know that that retaining wall, which will have to be massive, will be hugely intrusive on this village and on this neighborhood. And in terms of disrupting neighbors, the neighbors immediately surrounding are going to be profoundly affected by the kind of landfill that is going to have to be put in there to create the kind of level surfaces that the builder is envisioning. And I hope somebody who's reviewing this, this process, and it may not be the purview of this board, is looking to see whether that is even feasible. Because I think the last thing that any of us want is an engineering disaster on Marston Street. Um, but you know, I I I agree with Mr. Trunzo, it should be appropriate in context, it is completely inappropriate in context. Thank you very much.
Eileen Rosenberg? Eileen? You're muted. Douglas, you can go.
Okay, thank you.
I'm so sorry, I couldn't find, I have a new format on my Zoom. Um, I also apologize because my connectivity wasn't great, so I have some actually questions as opposed to comments. Um, did I understand that there was going to be a common driveway into all of these homes? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, what, what would differentiate that from a development? Wouldn't that constitute a development when there's a common driveway?
No, no, it doesn't. If you mean a subdivision, a subdivision is different than just adding a common driveway. That these properties have already been subdivided and are required to use a common driveway.
Okay, uh, okay, to me, it would, it would be viewed visually as sort of a, a, a subdevelopment. All right, so I wanted clarification. I also heard that there were eight trees that would remain. Does that include eight trees on all four properties or eight trees per property?
There are eight trees on the entire, all four properties that qualify as grand trees that should be preserved out of the eight reserves, seven of them.
There would be two, two grand trees per property, which doesn't seem like very much.
It's uh, when you look at the individual surveys, they all have different numbers. As I go through the presentations, I'll tell you which properties have which number of trees on them.
Okay. Uh, in addition, I guess I noted that, and it was commented upon, that giant, green giants would be planted for privacy. Um, I would encourage any planting and and I did hear that there would be some canopy trees, but to have walls of green giant again constitutes sort of a, a totally different look. And perhaps um, the consideration can be combining, a combin- combining some green giants along with canopies as opposed to a straight wall of green giants. Um, the other, one other question I had was, are all the facades similar? Do they all use the same material?
No, uh, they're all wood, um, but they don't all, you know, one is clapboard, uh, the rest of them are cedar shingles.
Mm-hmm. I guess my only concern, having witnessed the development, what I call a develop, a suburban development on Lighthouse Lane. Uh, and again, I haven't seen all of the, uh, each home individually, I haven't seen the entire plan. Uh, but that it would constitute a, what Catherine mentioned, a suburban look, which we already have to have dealt with on Lighthouse Lane. Uh, so that is a bit concerning, but again, I, with a caveat that I haven't seen uh, how similar or dissimilar each house is. I do recall that when Lighthouse Lane was being built, I did look at the plans and on paper, they looked very dissimilar. In reality, they were basically a variation on a theme, so they pretty much look the same. Uh, and I hope that wouldn't be the case with this, well, I will still call it a development, with this uh, development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Douglas, you're next.
Thank you. Douglas, New B two forty four Madison, uh, corner of Madison and Marston. Um, I I will echo a lot of the comments that were made in terms of the, the size and the scale. I uh, uh, understand also why you're looking at each of these properties uh, individually, but my comments are really about the, again, the whole development. Um, there, there are uh, multiple houses along um, Madison. Uh, we're, we're on the west side of Madison, there are series of properties on the east side of Madison that overlook this property. And uh, all these properties, I guess I should say, and will be significantly impacted by um, what essentially amounts other than eight trees to click cutting proposal for the whole property. Um, which will significantly change the character. Um, I'm also very concerned and, you know, it's an interesting point that uh, the subdivision was done nearly forty years ago and uh, environmental regulations have changed dramatically in those forty years. Um, and uh, the uh, obviously understanding of climate change um, is uh, uh, much greater now. Um, this area is in a, call it what you will, basin bowl, gully. Um, and put it another way, it's a low point. Um, not entirely agreed um, through all parties, whether it was originally a kettle hole that was filled or um, merely a depression, but uh, it's definitely a low point. Um, there is stormwater that flows into this area from the surrounding areas. It's not just the rainfall that falls on the properties. Um, it comes from Pearson, it comes from Madison, it comes from Division. And my understanding is that uh, uh, the, the village is currently expanding its stormwater management plans. Um, including looking at how to manage the collection of water here. Anyone who drives along Marston in our increasingly frequent uh, severe storms knows that the area floods. Um, and uh, so I think, and again, I'm not quite sure whether this is really the purview of uh, this board or another board. Um, but uh, um, it's very important uh, that, that the village somewhere um, considers very carefully the environmental impact um, of this sort of development. I disagree that um, uh, building large residential buildings, it doesn't have any impact. Um, of course, it has an impact because you've got solid buildings instead of uh, open um, open land to absorb the water. But probably more importantly, um, that area does flood and people are probably not going to be very happy if their new homes flood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I should just note for the record, it's under six New York C R R, part six seventeen point five type two actions, which are listed under subsection C, not subject to review under this part. Um, subsection eleven, construction or expansion of a single family residence on an approved lot, which also includes two and three family homes. And then subsection twelve, construction or expansion or placement of minor accessory residential structures, including verandas, carports, patios, decks, swimming pools, tennis courts, satellite dishes, fences, barns, storage sheds and other buildings are exempt from review under this part. So it's all under six New York C R R, part six seventeen point five, C eleven and twelve.
Yeah, Liz, if that, if that was you speaking, I'm, I'm not disputing uh, um, CICRA, I'm, I was just the rules have changed, I think, that, that was all introduced well after nineteen eighty five anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Lauren?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, I'm Lauren Friedman. Um, me and my, my husband Howard Collinger in two thirty six Division Street, uh, which is right next door to two of the proposed properties. Um, our house is actually on about two thirds of an acre, which is not much smaller than, than each of the individual parcels we're looking at today. Um, yet our house is on, is just eighteen hundred square feet. So just to get a sense of scale of the neighboring houses, um, we're a much smaller house on similar sized lot. Um, we're going to be significantly impacted by the loss of trees um, and by the fact that we'll probably be staring at two new houses totaling about ten thousand square feet. Um, and I just want to make three quick comments um, and request some more information. So my first comment is that our property, it, it relates to the fact that our property spans the entire length of two of the, the properties on the agenda tonight. Um, so we stare at both nine and eleven Marston. And when it rains, and many people have brought up the flooding problem, I can give a little bit more detail. There's a pipe that gathers all of the, the floodwater that comes on to Division Street. And there's what seems like a waterfall that falls right onto these, on two of the properties. Um, and when, when it rains, that, that water flows the entire length of the two properties, all the way to the back. It makes basically a stream that will sometimes sit there for an entire day. Um, and so I've heard the explanations that this is all exempt from CICRA and that this is not subject to review. But I think that for, for practical purposes, it would be good both for the homeowners and for the existing homeowners and the new homeowners to understand where is this water going to go? I heard there's an explanation that it's going to be drained, but where will it drain to in the meantime if we have completely flat land and we have no trees to absorb the water? So I would like to just understand the situation better. Um, and you know, so if, if anyone wants to comment on that, that would be helpful. Um, the second, it, the second thing which hasn't come up yet today is that I saw a reference in the plans to there being some sort of a wire fence that goes around uh, the property, not facing the external streets but facing the neighbors. And I just wanted to get a little bit more detail on what, what that is. Is that just a deer fence, which I think many have, or is that something that is larger and more intrusive? And if so, can we consider whether or not that comports with the historic um, standards? Um, and then finally, I, I agree with the board's suggestion that it is more appealing to look at the side of the house because it is a smaller mass. I just, you know, I, I think hopefully there could be some sort of a, a middle ground where there's both a reduction in mass and a pivoting of the houses. But then I also want to just make sure that we're clear that when we get to some of the houses, you know, if you pivot two houses, if you pivot um, eight, nine and eleven, which we're looking at to face the neighbors, we're looking at two giant masses from one small eighteen hundred square foot house. So I know we haven't gotten to those houses yet, but to the extent that's the proposal, I think that would be extremely burdensome for, for people who have been on the, in, in this house for ten plus years. So that's all I'd love to hear though, feedback on where exactly, how that drainage system is going to work and then on the wire fencing if I could. Thank you.
Janice?
Hi, I'm Janice Dono, Division Street, Sag Harbor Village. I've lived in the village for about thirty five years, maybe longer. Um, I'm very concerned that we seem to be kind of dancing around things by, I think, turning the houses. They'll appear to be this way or that way. Um, because I think really what the point is, is that the houses are simply too big. And they're too big for the context of the neighborhood, which is largely um, very small houses. And they don't fit in with what's already here. Um, I think they're going to dramatically change the nature of the neighborhood, although I'm happy to have houses and I want to make that clear. Um, I just think these houses are too big for, for the neighborhood. And it does look like a development, whether that is the um, exact definition of a subdivision or not, that is the impression that they are giving. Um, very concerned about the flooding, which other people have spoken to more eloquently than I can, but I think that that is a real issue. You've already got flooding without all of the square footage being taken up by houses and garages and swimming pools and driveways. So to say that dry walls are going to make that better, I, I find that really hard to believe. It's already flooded all the time when it rains. Um, I'm concerned about the tree perimeter particularly, since I they're built in the center, that there are going to have to be trees that come down. But But that seems to be something that will not be adequately addressed by having a, yet another monoculture of big greens or hedges. And I'm concerned also about this heat pool that we're going to create in the middle of this neighborhood in addition to the flooding problem by taking down trees and putting up more concrete than we possibly need. I also have a real issue with a retaining wall running against, running along Division Street, particularly across the street from a school. And then if there's a wire fence that runs on that, does that mean we'll be face to face with the wire fence? I mean, I, I can't kind of figure out how a deer fence would work if it's down in this sinkhole that these houses are presumably being planned for. So those are a lot of concerns. I get that some of them don't concern this particular board. But I think that we've got to think in context, both of the houses in the neighborhood and what this is going to do immediately and in the future to our village. So I would hope that, you know, that will have some impact. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thanks.
Thank you. How many more people do we have online? Okay, so this is what I want to do after Karen speaks. I think we need to move on to the next house. You know, because a lot of these comments are very good, but they're repetitive to some extent. And I'm, I'm thinking that maybe if we get a better perspective of how everything interrelates, we can then have a few minutes to comment at the end. But that's what I'd like to do. So if Karen could speak, I'd appreciate that. And I see one hand in the back.
Well, I mean, I can wait for one of the other houses, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I, I know there, we're getting into a lot of detail on this, and I know you're looking at individual houses. Just to, from an overview, I'm a, I'm, my name is Karen Aragoni. I'm an architect. I live in the neighborhood. I'm not an immediate neighbor. This is a proposal for four giant spec houses in the middle of the historic district, in the middle of a National Register, really important historically in the country, historic district. The whole thing needs to be rethought, in my opinion. I could get into it. I could attack it on many details, particularly the retaining wall thing. I mean, at the very least, you need elevations and you need engineering drawings for that. But these houses are completely out of scale and out of context for a National Register Historic District in the state of New York, in the United States of America. And I, I would just caution you about getting into a conversation about details. And that's it. I don't want to take up any more time, but I, that's the overriding point I'd like to make.
So, so we got a presentation about two months ago. We critiqued it. There's been some response here, and which I appreciate. And, and hopefully you're getting really this kind of a sense of, of your neighbors and how they feel about this. And maybe you can find a way to accommodate them some more. We cannot stop this. Okay, I don't see there's, there's any legal buttons. Just let me finish, that this can be stopped. But I think that, that, that we can come to a more convenient, you know, association. Someone said to me, why doesn't he just build smaller houses, six or seven smaller houses? And that's your choice. That's, that's okay. But it's your. You can't subdivide lots? Okay, because they've been merged already. Okay. So, so, so that's what we're faced with. And I appreciate, you know, his, his willingness to listen and, and to respond. But that being said, let's move on. Do you want to go to the next house, please?
Are we, how are we going to do this? Are we going to vote, I think, on each house, are we not?
I, I think, I think we still need to get a better understanding of the context of how they can relate to each other. Yeah.
All right. And, and the landscape of each property, too. We really haven't, I mean, I have not seen a landscape plan.
The landscape plans are in your packets. We just haven't, we haven't.
We haven't put them up here yet.
Okay.
You can do that.
Do you want to see that of the, of number one, I mean, of number?
Do you want to do number?
Of number seven? Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Could I see one of those dior fifths?
Which are green giants along the north side, is that it?
It's, it's a little hard to read up there, I just realized. So I can get them the larger.
Zoom in, maybe?
I'll totally give what we're looking at. So we have the green giants going around the perimeter, forty-five thirteen-foot tall trees. We have a cherry tree next to the driveway. Have some privet in between the garage and I guess that walkway. And then the green giants in the back. In the front, we've got butterfly bush, hydrangea, privet, woody. One hydrangea.
So.
And the front, I think that, is that the privet, the, the facing Marsen Street?
So facing Marsen, you have.
Fence, correct?
Yes, I would, I would slap that. And I.
Thank you. Really need to. Thank you.
Let's thank you.
We can check. We're good.
Well, those are privets, and then the green giants go around the actual perimeter between us and the neighbors.
So the, the way that it shows that the hedge is in front of the fence, correct?
Correct.
And it's going to.
No, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's backwards. The.
The fence is in front.
The, the fence is in front of that.
The fence, the fence is what you see from the street.
Okay.
Okay. And then, so that's.
Mm-hmm, and that's the green.
Isn't this as a corner? Isn't this also the front here?
Uh. Of north, yeah, I guess, yes. This one is.
No, because this is the driveway. This is the driveway.
Yeah, the driveway.
I see, okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
We did that because when you go around the village, you see all the fences.
No, that's good. I, when I looked.
There are engineering plans for all of these properties with drainage included. It is a first in the developer and the owner's best interest to make sure that they can collect all runoff. For many, many years, you know, the village has benefited by using this property as sort of a, you know, basically to capture runoff from, from Division and from the school. That, that's where the pipe has come from. And that's why one of the speakers was mentioning, it looks like a little, you know, stream until it dries up at the end of the day. But so we've contacted the village to talk about village drainage features as well because we realized that developing this property is going to take away something that the village has been using to collect runoff. So they're going, they're going to have to collect it some other way. But it is our job to keep our own runoff on our properties and make sure that it doesn't go anywhere else. As far as the retaining wall, there, there is going to be a retaining wall up and down Division or on Marsen. There will be a retaining wall, as I understand it, in the very rear of a property. It'll be four feet tall. There won't be any fill brought onto the site. Any sort of leveling out of the site or movement of earth is going to come from the, the, the earth that's already there. So we're not bringing in fill to bring up the grade. Retaining wall is offset three feet. And so, exactly.
So the routine, we are building, the high spot is the corner of Division and Marsden. From the wall of Division, it goes all, that's at twelve, goes all the way down to a four feet.
Right.
So all along Division, it will be retained wall. My property, you will not see it from Division. It's below Division Street sidewalk.
There's one there already.
There is.
And then it's got that big, heavy iron.
That's right.
That's forever and ever.
Other side of that. And we're going to build that six feet out so that there is room for plantings and trees up there.
It's there.
Down the block of view from Division onto these properties. Nobody will see what's going, you'll see nice greenery as opposed to what they're looking at now.
See that in the plan for fifteen and eleven.
Yeah, you'll see, but you see it on this one, too. Here we put privets facing.
Right.
So it's not so blocking and it's a little more welcoming. The, the privet hedge versus the hedge of green giants. However, around the property, which is only between all of these other properties to give them privacy, they have green giants.
Right.
Right, but her comment is it don't, they don't have to, they could be shade trees. There could be a lot of other things to break up sightlines. You know, they don't have to be a wall of, of, of green giants. And I, I think that bears some merit. Because that's kind of what gives it a suburban, overly manicured type of look. So.
Right, but I, I also think what we're hearing from everybody is that we're taking down a lot of trees and everybody's very concerned.
Right.
I do not mind planting some of these like oaks and stuff like that, which are very rare. And most of those are not oaks, most of those are.
Scrubs.
Maple.
Yeah.
It's all maple and bamboo.
Right.
Not bamboo.
Yeah, but you can have the bamboo. But what I'm saying is I don't have a problem with planting a number of those around and give it some of the canopy, give it some, but good stock that will look good twenty and fifty and a hundred years from now as opposed to us now. So I think that's a good compromise and that will.
Yeah, and the green giants really are, it's all about the privacy issue. I, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yes.
But you could have that and plant the others so that you have a marriage of both.
And then I just wanted to point out that, that the neighbor next to us on Division, I think she asked a question about a wire fence being there. That, that's on the survey. It, it's an existing wire fence.
Okay.
So that, that's not a proposed fence, it's already there.
This would be probably on number eleven?
So I just wanted, this is, uh, number nine. This from the nine.
Here. That, that lady that was on the phone.
This is what she wishes to hear.
Yeah, because she said she's having to look up over there.
So can we see some elevations?
That is, but that is the fence that goes around there.
On the nine.
But it's all fitted by all the trees.
Yes, everybody has to have here.
Hi, Judith.
Hi, Judith. Turn, turn yourself on.
You're on mute.
You're muted.
You're muted, Judith.
You're on the fifteen.
Yes. Carrie, keep us going. So we're ready when you offer number fifteen.
So do you have some elevation to these two we can look at?
Yes, so the bush is moved to nine.
Enough. Carrie wants us to go to fifteen.
I'm flexible, I'm flexible.
Good girl.
No worries, no worries, fifteen. So for that property, when we get to the survey, that property is thirty-five thousand four hundred and ninety acres, about point eight, point eight of an acre. This one is on the corner of Division and Marsen. This property is the property that was, that was rotated to face Marsen. On this property, there aren't, there weren't any branch trees. So I just wanted to point that out. The step back from the street is approximately forty feet for the residents. It might look a little bigger to people walking or driving down Marsen only because the pavement of Marsen is certain extents. It looks like the property is actually bigger than it is. If you actually stand at the property line, there's, the distance is forty feet. We have building coverage at eleven point seven six percent, where twenty percent is allowed. Total coverage is at eighteen fifty-nine percent, where twenty-five is allowed. Again, the, the height is thirty feet. The height of the garage, which I should have meant to tell you, is well, all of the garages are fourteen feet high and five hundred and thirty-seven square feet. They are also all clad with wood and have good fruits on them as well. The G F A on this property is forty-eight twenty-one. The color scheme is cedar again, these cedar shingles. The intent is to leave them in a natural condition to weather with a trim in white. Aluminum gutters will be used.
Excuse me. Trim is tan.
The trim is what?
Tan.
It's so white on, I'll show you.
It's tan.
It looks like tan to me, but on the, on the red rings, but on the.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
It softens it.
Now that's. We expect that's the sign, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can we take us around? Can you spin us around the property?
This is what you see.
Common driveway, would be common driveway, green giants that we've been talking about. And we have a landscaping, pollinator landscaping, like that, which the, is that's what we're talking about as well.
So this one, the width, the length is on Division, is that right? So this, this view is the Division Street side view, is that right?
So what we're looking at now is.
It's the.
It's the corner view, right?
No, it's this, it's in between, I think.
Yeah.
It's the, the common draw. He's over here. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I get it. So we're looking, this, sorry, apologies. This is the view from the driveway.
This is the view from the common driveway.
Of the common driveway in the.
Yeah.
The plan, I don't know. This is not on Mars.
Right.
That's, that's right, so. It's, I don't know if you have the survey on there, but this is the survey.
This can't be number fifteen.
But this is the one that was.
Yeah, this is the one they turned.
Yeah, it's the one they turned.
Yeah. Road turned.
Because where's the?
The garage is.
Garage, this is the wrong image.
This is the garage.
This one. So this, this.
From this view. Yes.
Coming in this doorway, this doorway, am I right in saying?
Are you showing us something else while you're doing?
This entrance is not that limited. So I just want to make sure I've got the right version of the image in my head. So this is this one? You're coming in here?
That's right, and that's this.
Except that's this view of it.
That's what you're looking at, this view going this way.
But you see how the, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but you see how this is, okay, directly the, the garage.
We're looking from the back.
Yeah, but that's, you're looking in a bright light.
We're on the center, we're on the center driveway.
Uh-huh. Right.
From the street. So this is really, it's inside to inside view.
Yeah, see the garage, where the garage is?
That's the side view.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But this is the front view.
Yeah, so the front view, which is the brighter side of it.
Which we just saw.
It's just a walk on it.
And this view is, sorry.
The side, side, front.
You see what's, this, this doesn't have like a really commanding front porch.
So that's why I was saying.
Well, I mean, I think that.
It does.
It does.
It does have a porch, we can't see it.
The front porch is just a portico.
Right.
Because on the side, we have a porch. The front porch is just a portico, because on the side we have a porch, but not on the front.
But you don't see it because of the hedge or the trees.
Right.
Exactly, yeah, it's hidden from your view right now.
Okay.
I think that's one thing to be said about the green giants, I feel like they they create a, um it's almost like exclusive, it's kind of like a
Nobody can look in.
Nobody can look in, and I think one of the things that's really wonderful about Sag Harbor is the fact that if you're riding your bike down the street, I mean, you can see little peaks, I mean, people want privacy and I I I understand that, but there is something about an openness to what you see in Sag Harbor.
So let me comment on that.
Please do.
On seven, we didn't do the green giants, because you're seeing, and the backyard is behind the house.
Okay.
Now on this house, we turned the house to Sag Harbor guys.
And that's why you're getting the privacy.
So now, when we looked at the house last week, or a couple of weeks ago, they're saying, well, you could see the whole pool. I said, well, that's why we put the green giants, so you don't look at the pool.
Understood. But maybe you.
Because we turned the whole house.
I understand that, and forgive me for not being here, but maybe it's the green giants only a portion of the way um here, because there's the pool, right?
No problem. No, no, no. Okay, so the pool, the house is facing this way.
Uh huh, understood.
Green giants are back here, over here, this is all front lawn.
Right.
So, and this is the retaining wall over here.
Right, right, you're right.
The green giants are effectively around here.
So, when you've seen this from here, you're gonna see the porch sicking off, you're gonna see the pool.
Uh huh.
Understood.
So here we have the screen.
Understood, but but, but the picture that we're looking at now is all green giants here, which is.
Lost in Division. Yeah, but there's a no, this is essentially the side of the house, not the front, this is not on the street.
So that the pool is.
I think we're looking at the green giants.
This is, the street is here.
I I understand, I understand what you're saying.
So this is a uh, it's a driveway.
We're making a crime now.
I. No, I get it, I I just feel like it's.
That's all, I mean, listen, if you want less privacy on your side tree, you could do that, but I think we're concerned about Marsden, what people are gonna look at.
Right, then, under- understood.
That's why we're doing that.
Um, you know, I I just.
You have um multiple conversations.
There's the ones, and he has that for your record, so you're right, one person talking at a time is really helpful, and the audience would like to hear, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, apologies, we're trying to get our head around what this is looking like, cause I, cause my, cause I think Michelle's in my question, what I'm trying to get my head around is if this is the front of the house, right, then the front of the house, is that facing Marsden? And if, and it's not, what I think this is, is this image, this rendering is showing the front of the house being on the driveway.
Yeah. This is.
No.
No, no, this is the front of the house, this is the front Marsden.
No, it we hit.
So this is facing, okay, so this is facing Marsden, in which case, am I correct in saying that
Right.
the corner from Marsden to Division has even set back, has the, has the green giants, is that what I'm seeing on the right hand corner?
Uh.
No, that's the common driveway.
No.
Um.
Okay, I think you have a, it's gonna be on one, one uh view at a time, but that's
Yes, that is what you're seeing, yes.
That is what I'm seeing, right?
That whole, on either side, that's Mars.
Yep.
Just saying the same thing.
And Division is over there.
Uh huh.
What's this?
Uh that's a common driveway.
This this driveway is the common driveway, which means the piece that we're seeing on the right is Division, because that's the front of, I'm sorry, that's, that's Marsden.
No, no, no.
Marsden. Right.
But am I right in interpreting this, that the Marsden Street side of the property has green giants on the face?
I know.
Yes, yes.
Has a problem.
Yes, don't be.
In the red ring?
All the way, all the way around.
So that you can be looking into the yard.
Yeah. It it goes all the way around that corner, from Marsden to the common is all green giants. That's what you're seeing there, goes and wraps around the corner, it's all green giants.
And I guess what I'm trying to get my head wrapped around is, from the perspective of the pedestrian or the driveway, or the driver, the person who's driving, but just the perspective of this house on Marsden is the side view, therefore, is that being interpreted as that's the side yard as opposed to
No, that's.
It's the front yard, I'm sorry, so on Marsden.
No, that's, as you say, I think what you see from Marsden.
Correct, so what I'm trying to get my head around is, if that's the front yard, then we're, we've got a four foot fence and thirteen foot green giants on the front of the house, am I reading that correctly?
Uh huh, yeah.
Yes.
That's right.
There it is, yes, is this new work at home?
By the court, look.
That's true, nobody's looking in your your yard, come on.
Cause. Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, you have. It's like you have to.
And the other thing is for the balance of the house, because you have the narrow house in the middle, you have the trees on both sides, so you're not looking into the pool
Break it in half.
Uh huh.
and everything, and then, and then and you remember also that there's a parking lot, where everybody going to school, locks their clock, their cars all along Marsden.
Uh huh.
So rather than have them all looking in on their pool, that's where they have green giants. But we've left the house open, put a lot of landscaping, put a walkway, so that it's all nice and inviting. And I put the auger in also, which I think is nice touch.
Okay, so we're good on fifteen?
Well, we, I mean, I think it's the, it's, it, yes.
Okay.
Well, do you wanna see that?
But but going to the other one.
You, that, we saw the rendering, but we didn't see the.
The elevation.
There it is. Yeah, we didn't see any elevations of fifteen.
There you can see, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to see. See, the elevations are fifteen, you didn't see.
Yes, no, we haven't looked at them.
You don't look at them yet, I know it's late, huh, but.
Right, I'd say it's good.
Hey.
So just uh for for the, uh just to make it clear, so we we have the green giants, as you said, along uh the common driveway, also on Marsden, there is
It's around the whole property.
Mr. Pennell said, a bunch of plantings on the corner of Division there, um that are much lower, those are the
Because it turns.
uh plants that will attract the bees, butterflies, um and uh we also have the crepe pearls and uh it's a, it's a pretty extensive landscaping plan on the site.
Okay. This is, this is a park, I mean, this is where the kids are.
No, the kids park here on Marsden, there's no parking here.
Okay, right, exactly, right.
So the trees go here and they go all the way past and all the way across here.
It's deep.
It's, it's nonetheless, the image is.
Oh, it's much. House is very high tree.
Okay.
So this is the front elevation, uh this house is uh cedar shingles again, uh this is the house that was turned, so that the smaller, so the base smaller spot, this is the street, uh there's um uh the color scheme here is, oh I guess you looked at it.
Cedar with tan.
Cedar with tan.
Yeah, the cedar with the tan trim, and uh we've also made the uh the trim around uh the, for the porch, uh the same color, so that it all matches. Um beneath that, you'll see the right elevation, uh which is toward the east, so uh that would be the same.
Division.
Uh and so that would essentially be the, I guess, the side of the house, um there's uh an entity there, uh so you can get the house.
That's why they need those.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't believe there's been any changes to the actual elevations on this one.
No, the, well, since the first one, we changed the whole uh side of it facing Mars, that one changed. And um on the rear, that was not changed, well, but that's the right side, which would be the side facing Division, but nobody sees that, because those, those will be blocked by the
Green giants.
Green giants. And you wanna go up again?
Yep, and there should be one more.
Oh, go down.
I'm sorry, I thought you said. Is that okay?
Okay, and here, what we did is, we continued the theme of the diamond windows, with just little touches of.
Yes.
Good job.
We've got the rear elevation, which is the north side, and then up to the west, which is what was hidden behind those trees, when we look at the uh the inside.
Right.
Uh this also is thirty two feet high, it does not require any variances. And once again, as far as the floor area, it represents thirteen percent of the lot area.
I know.
This actually, actually, this is what I'm looking, there's more alignment.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Sorry, I need to speak up a little bit, I think this one, the the side view, this one actually is a lot more uh consistent between the size of the windows on the top and the size of the windows on the bottom, and even looking at the front,
Uh huh.
the side, the the front door porch, um the front door side lights.
Excuse me, can you speak up?
Oh, sorry, I apologize, it's probably because of the fan behind you, I said, I think this one is doing a better job of looking at the um the uh consistency of the windows on the top and the windows on the bottom, right? And the front door being sort of centered between the columns, I think this, this is doing a better job than.
But this is side.
I get it, I get it, yeah, but I just, I was just comparing in my head to the symmetry that existed on the other house, on seven Marsden, which
Right.
on the front door is a little bit inconsistent, the 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 elevation on the front, if we switch to that view on this, um sorry, Carrie, if we can move to the front side view on this.
North of the south. I know, I figured it was this time, all right, no, this, but so it'd be the south.
Keep going, yeah, that's the rear.
We want the south view, yeah, there you go.
That's the south side. Yeah, and so my my immediate reaction when I looked at this was, based on the height of the building itself, the front door is centered, and so it makes a lot of sense, but my eye immediately goes to the window on the left and the tiny window on the right,
Having a window.
and then the windows on the top being, looking materially smaller in proportion than the window either on the bottom or in proportion to the rest of the home itself, they look like they're
Too small.
Too small.
But you didn't get that sense in the rendering?
And you do get that sense on the rendering, actually?
You you do, you think so?
You do get that sense on the rendering, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, I'm ready when you are.
All right, let's move on to the next.
Or do we have to ask comments on this house?
Does anyone wanna make a comment on this? Oh, lots of people, okay.
The whole window thing and everything is part of the part of its function, but a lot of it has to do with, maybe things a little quirky.
Oh, okay, interesting, all right, interesting.
Well, you can make them less quirky if you want to, uh.
God bless you.
But, okay, so, um.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay, I mean, if the windows wanna be more standardized, I have no problem with that.
Me too.
But, okay.
It was.
So who who wants to comment on this, please sir, come up? This is your first time up today.
Hi, I'm uh Rover Pagano, I'm on uh two sixty eight Division Street, and so welcome to the neighborhood, I'm uh your neighbor to the south, the White House, so I'd be opposite fifteen.
Yeah.
Yes, I know where you are, I'm on the corner.
Yeah, I tried to run you down.
Oh geez.
Kept going, um you you know, I'm very much in favor of houses in the neighborhood, all, you know, my wife and I, you you haven't been here long, uh but in a way, right, it took us a long time to get here, so I'm I'm very, very, very interested in what you're doing, when you say things like good stuff, I I like that a lot. When you say things like quirky, I I I do get a little nervous, uh on what you're putting on fifteen. Um you you know, I'm I'm concerned with uh any any kind of wall, I I mean, the way I see it, we're pretty close to Division, and it looks like this would be west really, so the houses would sort of be staggered, correct? The White House.
Yeah, they want to get one.
Right, so.
That's great.
That's.
Well, you're not gonna see the wall either, so it's following the sidewalk on both sides, so you're not gonna see.
Okay, okay, um uh to to the board, I I trust the process, I mean, I know you spend a lot of time, there's been a lot of discussion about Marston in general, and I I I feel better hearing, I I know Val, so I feel better hearing Val's comments, or those people just had, so like uh um uh Lee Oppenheimer said in the last meeting, I mean, just just work with the neighbors, they're great, can you come to a great place, even though I'm new this one year. Um it's very, very good, they're uh great people, and I'm sure you'll do a a great job.
Any other comments? Okay, oh Val's coming up, okay.
Alright, so this presentation of front porch street speaks to your comment in terms of side, so it's presenting as less mass.
Yeah.
We look at that elevation, typical Sag Harbor houses, federal style.
Uh huh.
It's either a three bay or a five bay.
Uh huh.
This house, if it stood on its own, if you didn't know what was happening behind it, look at this front facade here, and look at the key elements, you brought up an alignment, so that reads more as a common front door. On the other house, it was subordinate, and it should be, to Bethany's comments, subordinate that front door and celebrate it, or that side door, subordinate the side door, celebrate the front door.
Right.
Here, okay, you can make a little bit more of a statement with this door.
Yeah.
In terms of the window, commentary, let's pretend we're not looking at the back, look at this as front. Does that proportional window smell correct here, can the scale change? And the answer is probably yes, cause as this presents to the road, it's reading, you know, much better than the big long house, so it's doing its job in terms of being more in character with the neighborhood, is it big? Well, look at that rendering, it reads long, but if you look at the site plan, it just says that in the street. So the mass of this is not gonna read nearly as strong, or because you're presented with the side.
Yeah.
But I would think that with regard to, if we did look at that, what we would put, we'll call it front elevation, which is really inside, it's not gonna be something where people can see this house, because it's not a subdivision. If it were a subdivision, it would have a primary street with fourteen feet per trucks on both sides and a cul-de-sac. These are private homes, so it's not like the general public can go down this street and look at that elevation. One thing which I would comment, very important to this board, is the trees, a lot of trees on this property. I've walked these streets thousands of times, over thirty plus years, I walked my dogs four times today, I can tell you every tree on this property. So it would be helpful if the planting plan indicated what kind of trees are on the property, there are more important trees in the back of this property, on the two far corner lots, Mrs. Freeman made comment, this gives her privacy, there's a grove of bamboo, which is illegal, but it's there. So I think that the landscape plan can address some of those things, but it should be spelled out more clearly. This is not a landscape drawing, this is, this is just a site plan, it shows green giants, there's been a tour information of giants everywhere in the neighborhood, it's starting to look like a Christmas tree farm or a monastery.
Right. Well said.
Or if it could be hetero, yeah, it could be great.
Uh huh.
So I think in terms of the architecture, if we go to the side elevation, let's still look at that. It's gables, which is important, there's gonna be a distinction for that when you work the next two projects on this, which are hip roof designs. This is more consistent with the architecture of the neighborhood in terms of stand up gable, even deep roofs, you can go that far. But the the height, the reason why this center roof is so tall is because he has to stick to a six and twelve roof pitch, if he could have flattened off the top, we could bring that roof down two to three feet, by having a flat section in the center, then the two sides fall off. But we have a flat roof code, twenty five foot is a maximum, or a six and twelve pitch, so he has to keep it up to that height. But look at the thirty five foot line, it's, he's down lower, so mass and scale on these houses is actually negligible. There are bigger houses in the neighborhood, and I've sat at that data and seen thirty five foot houses, wondering why? Why are you bringing that, this residential sector in the historic? Why are you bringing that, this residential sector in the historic district too? That's just how our code is. Sometimes we can't walk back those applications, but. Look at that, and that's a good distinction. It's big on paper, but in reality, this house could read a lot smaller. If it's planted well, if there's trees on it, and again, as for a planting plan, it's just something to consider.
Right, yeah.
There are trees, there's a lot of garbage trees on the property.
Mm-hmm.
This lot was clear cut in early two thousands, not a single tree facing Marston, facing division, except for the back corners. Again, you need a swift to do that, stormwater prevention plan. There's no concern that these properties are gonna overburden the road. Runoff on that road is a direct result, water that comes down, division. And from Pierce, and you catch basins at the bottom of that rail cannot sustain a two inch per hour rainfall. However, these properties can. If it were a field, no way. It would take over six hours, would take over half a million gallons of water. And that's why a three million dollar drainage system would have been involved if it had no trees. There will be trees. There will be dry wells, there will be grass, and it will handle the water. We're gonna have rain tonight, a lot of it. It will fill, but it dissipates within probably six hours that that takes into the groundwater. But no comments about flooding should be a concern to the board. Your purview is looking at the architecture and is in character with the neighborhood.
I don't think so.
These are the best two out of the applications, and there will be more discussion. Let's do this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Now, windows, I would like to see the windows face the road, if they might be considered. You've got a home on this house.
Okay.
Eileen Rosenberg.
Thank you, um, a brief comment, and I I appreciate that, um. Concern has been voiced about the visual impact of the green giant walls. Um, I would appreciate it if you could give equal consideration to the environmental. Concerns of just having those bushes, um. You know, trees are, canopy trees are needed for carbon sequestration, purifying the air. For shade, which will decrease temperatures and decrease the use of A C and energy costs. For stormwater management because of their root systems, to attract wildlife, for noise reduction. That's simp, those things will simply not be accomplished with with green giants. Um, so when considering the landscape plan, I would really encourage. Much greater attention given to canopy trees. I think it would be environmentally sound and certainly help with any stormwater management systems as well. But for all the reasons I mentioned, um, I think some focus should be given to that, not just visual, although I I I find the visual. Very suburban, not to, you know, if people wanted that, they should be in a place where that already exists. Not to create it here, but um. Again, I think environmental concerns should enter into the consideration for landscape plans. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online want to talk?
Douglas and Lauren.
Hi, again, Douglas, you'd be, um, you know, I think it'd be extremely useful if the renderings showed. The topography uh uh of the surrounding area. Um, you know, the the these are pluses and minuses, the uh slope up from uh this elevation to. Uh Madison and the houses along Madison, which, as I said earlier, very much overlook these properties. The uh, um. Uh, okay, I'm sorry, just getting some strange signals coming up. Um, the 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 height of the elevation up to Division Street. Um, again, may not be the purview of this board, but the uh, um, some of the. Uh, safety risks in terms of having a vertical wall where at the moment there's a slope down. Um, in terms of the kids coming out of Pearson, um, and obviously the visual impact from uh. Um, the properties on uh, um, on Jermaine, on the south side of Jermaine in this area. Um, it it's just very difficult looking at these renderings to really understand. What it would look like with these surrounding uh, um, properties.
Thank you for your comments and.
Lauren?
Hi, um, just a brief follow-up, uh, Karen Ergony, who's a neighbor, uh, made a good comment about. The impact of the overall houses on the district and and on the country. Um, and I, what I heard was a reaction that the A R B really is is not empowered to do anything about the size of the houses. Um, I'm a lawyer, I, you know, I, I'm just looking at some case law here, but the Supreme Court of Suffolk County. Decided in in the matter of Lynn S. Manager in twenty eighteen, it was against the Board of, the Architectural Review Board of Southampton. Um, that the property is subject not only to zoning ordinance, but to the additional requirements of a historic district. Which uh local legislature may require, as the Sag Harbor District has. And the Su- the Supreme Court held there's no conflict as the in in the the A R B. Um, deciding on the basis of size, because the historic district constitutes an additional regulatory requirement. Beyond the zoning laws, it's applicable to all property owners in the district. So the board may consider the size or scale of the proposed dwelling as it relates to the property itself. Surrounding properties and the neighborhood, and may reject an application if it finds that the scale of the construction. Is not compatible with the property or neighborhood. Um, and the the decision of of the Supreme Court in that, in that case, was that. Because the majority of the board decided it was not empowered to decide be on the basis of the size of the houses. The matter actually had to be sent back to the A R B in order to decide on that. And I think that this is, you know, it came out of Southampton, um, code, but it's. Because code three hundred thirteen point six, um, which is the criteria that applies to all applications, so that the board, you shall. Disapprove any application for a building or to it if the board finds that, um, the building. Would be so detrimental to the character or development of the surrounding area, so as to produce one or more of the harmful effects. Set out by reason of, among others, volume, including length, width, or breadth, gross floor area, height of the building or height of roof. Or excessive mass or scale of the building or structure when contrasted with other like uses or structures in the village. And so I think that these are the exact issues that I that that members of the community are bringing up again and again tonight. Which is that this this is not consistent with the overall scale of the village, it's too large. And I think that not only is the board empowered to make a decision to tell. The developers to make it smaller, but also, you know, i- is it it actually has to, if it if it agrees with the community on that point, so. Um, just wanted to to raise that, and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for for your information. I think we'll. We'll maybe have an executive session and talk to Liz about that another time. So we can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's continue.
Chance Dyer?
Hi, I was actually in the meeting earlier, um, but I had to head out, but yeah, my name's Chance. I grew up in the village. Um, I just wanna say that. You know, to me, clearing over four acres of greenery in twenty twenty-four is just wrong. And that's what's on Marsden right now. It's vegetation and trees. You know, some of these trees are grand trees, some of them aren't so grand, but to suggest that knocking all of these trees down only to leave seven standing. Just seems like an entirely backwards action in today's world. And with the addition of any new plantings, this development plan will directly contribute to the heating of the immediate area. The average temperature this past July in the village of Sag Harbor was eighty-five degrees, not including humidity. It is only gonna get hotter with more humidity in the years ahead, and trees and other plantings have a natural cooling effect. By absorbing the sun's radiation on its way to down towards the ground, so they're gonna be invaluable tools in the years ahead as we deal with our own climate crisis in. Sag Harbor, which already we're seeing signs of with the storm runoff issues. So I wanna mention that I live on a nearby property with an acreage that is almost exactly the same. As the uh main house, only we kept our trees, and our house is fifteen hundred square feet as opposed to this monster home. So just because you can clear an entire lot of trees and build yourself a mansion, doesn't mean you should. In fact, think of the example you would be setting by building a more modest home and retaining some of the adjacent greenery. Instead, you're setting a dangerous precedent for the future and development of Sag Harbor. These homes sit within a broader community and a protected historic district. If they can build homes this big now, they will build bigger homes in the future. If they can clear cut these trees now, they will clear cut more trees in the future. Soon the whole village will look like this. We all see it changing. And should these proposals be accepted, this will be established as the new normal when it comes to development. So the truth is that the scale of these homes, if they're anything close to being a reasonable size, would not have this level of backlash. This is a historic district, it's protected, and its character and integrity should be preserved and be of utmost consideration. When it comes to any new builds. Homes of this size, in lack of imagination, are not considerate of the broader community, nor the history of Sag Harbor. Trees matter and should be protected. We cut them down to our own peril. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, so so someone did.
I just wanted to re- uh my earlier stance, um. Uh, James Bacon from twenty-six Jermaine, um, watching all four homes and seeing really the guidance that you have given them. I know everyone has a lot of opinions about this, certainly people who are uh more against it are probably a little more vocal. Um, but watching really what you allow them to do, uh, I'm a real estate agent as well, that's my profession. Um, and seeing these renderings and how they come out on paper versus the size and scope of these properties. And I'm, as Val said as well, I walk up and down these streets, and I'm sorry, I'm brushing my back. Walk with down these streets regularly with my son and my dog, we're driving around, and everything is very much in in in. Congruent size and scope with everything else in the village. Uh, these designers, these architects, these builders put a lot of time, you guys put a lot of time too, there's a lot of feedback. Nothing is approved in one session I've seen here. There's a lot of give and take, and I think that everyone really works together, and he's really made a really pretty plan. That's really gonna be a fine project. That's how I feel about all four.
Thank you. So that was a good segue, actually. Um, this is what I think, we've had another exchange. You've heard, are you willing to go back and and make any reconsideration on a- any adjustments or changes? I think we talked about the landscaping plan. I agree that we should have a well-developed landscaping plan. Um, you have, um. Maybe a topographical survey would be helpful. Um. Hmm?
They are doing that, they show that.
Well, I guess they show some height deviations, but they really don't.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, they didn't hear.
They're two-foot contoured.
Okay.
Yeah, almost.
Okay.
I think one of the pieces, sorry, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
I think one of the, one of the pieces of feedback that you're hearing from everybody is. How big these are going to be, and what is not yet clear to me from a rendering perspective is. The contouring of the land, because I think some of the responses that you've provided are the valley. I don't, I don't know if that's the right word to use from division, the corner of division and Marston in particular is a little bit higher. And the and the houses sit a little bit lower, so actually visually being able to see a rendering that could demonstrate that. Would be able to show whether the 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 size of the property itself would would present a significant mass. Or not. I know you've answered earlier that it's gonna be the same level as the Marston Street.
Everywhere on this property will be flat. It is a retaining wall that you're not gonna see, even though people voted and said they thought they'd see it, but they don't see it, it's level with the side wall. And below it, so that's from division. And then there's a very small one over here, they're just flat to down, so the the property is flat. It's not, doesn't have different, um. Different variations.
Elevation.
It's gonna be flat. All four lots, flat.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it is. So you have a height here, and you put a retaining wall here, and then it goes flat from there.
Yeah, yeah. But you've got.
If the majority of the whole of the property is flat now, it's just by division here, it's not really.
Okay.
Yeah, and as it goes down, you'll see it's flattened out. It's just only the first, the highest spot, it's a corner of division and one of them. And that's twelve feet, but within fifty feet, which is nothing on this, so all two hundred. They go right down, so it's it's only sharp in that corner. And that's gonna be retaining walls in the backyard that nobody sees.
Okay, um.
Really.
I guess part of what you're hearing from everybody is if if the. If it's a twelve-foot or twelve-foot drop and then flat, does that make any difference to the view from the street as of the house?
Yeah.
And I think what you're saying is there is no difference, it's just going to remain full visible.
It's not, it's way.
Okay, understood. Interesting, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so we just have to, are you gonna consider any of the suggestions we we made and maybe we could.
At this one canopy. I mean, I think what I personally would, is that you would like the landscaping plan more detailed.
Uh-huh.
I understand your comment, um, that's why I gave you the picture of flowers, because I knew that for landscaping that I used to see.
Uh-huh.
So, um, I would recommend to the client that we work on the landscaping plan. I would also recommend, uh, we sit and talk about, uh, the comments that we were trying about two houses. Um, to see if there's any way that we can make any modifications that will make the board more comfortable or neighborhood more comfortable. I think there's. I I know the client would love to leave before approvals tonight, but this is a lot of work and a lot of energy to go up into this. They're going to continue it, and I think some comments, I I have developed a need, I understand them. I'd like to talk about them. Um, I don't know, I mean, I would certainly want to hear about the other two houses.
I think you should, don't you?
Yeah, you you guys ready to stay the tone?
I am.
Okay. Let's hear about the other two.
I just think the next, and the next step.
Right.
It'll go much quicker.
Okay.
I agree, I agree, I'll try to keep it, I'm trying to keep it, um, and carry you to make what I'm wanting to do next. Um, let's do eleven, I think.
Sure.
So we've done seven and fifteen, is that what we're saying? And we're doing eleven and nine?
Yeah.
Right.
This is more into, uh, eleven would be a property that is on division, um, that is neighboring the neighbor that was sponsored.
Right.
Um, this is the lot that we're talking about that has the the uh, the drainage from this office. Coming out of the property and creating what I would call a spill, um, on the property. This property has three, um, branch trees on it, um, all of which we think we can preserve. Um, it is thirty-eight thousand two hundred ninety-six square feet. Um, it is, the the building coverage of the closing is eleven point four eight percent for twenty is allowed. Twenty percent allowed, uh, block coverage is eighteen two four, or twenty-five percent is allowed. Uh, the height, uh, is thirty-two and change, uh, almost thirty-five feet. Um, there, this one will be clapper siding, so I don't know if we want to bring up. Uh, we have two. The renderings.
This one's first here.
Um, this house is.
This is the drunk.
Clapper siding, uh, wider width, um, higher siding, and also, um. Shallow, uh, shingle roof, um, the corner here is obviously white. We, uh. So the G F A is, uh, five thousand one hundred and fourteen. Again, at that thirteen percent mark in terms of its relationships besides the property. Um, we have presented, um, a landscape, uh, what was called a landscape plan. Uh, which, uh, shows the work plan, planning to plan on the property, um, which does include, um, the. The planting material that I'm discussing in the white, so I won't repeat all.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if we want to take elevations.
Yeah. Actually, I like this one.
And it looks good, right?
Well, it it does.
Yeah.
Um, and it.
And it doesn't have the suburban feel to it. I think it's the, it's the lack of dormers, it doesn't have a suburban feel to me.
Right.
As the other ones did.
He did, he did go back and.
Yeah, yeah.
Different facade material too.
Styles, yeah. Yes, circular columns. There she is.
Judith wants to get back to her lobster and maybe.
Oh, no. And so the front of this one is on the central driveway, is that correct?
This one is, yes, the entry base. So that's the front.
Looks different than the render.
I know why we're clapping siding. The right side of the issue is those portion of the. That's the side entrance from the driveway. Abandon ball pyramid block here. It's the rear elevation, elevation, which does help with the.
So the rear elevation is on Division.
Yes, faces Division.
It faces Division, right?
Yeah, man's the pool.
The other side is. Opposite Marston.
The drive, the common driveway. Oh, this is that property of the, of the lady that spoke.
But that side is this view that we have on the left side elevation. Because the rear elevation faces Division.
Correct.
And the bottom half of the page faces.
I think that's.
Common street.
Yeah.
A shared driveway.
This side, right, this side faces, it's the rear elevation. Which is east and that.
So it's three, this is her, this, this.
This is the view that I think.
The bottom view, right, yeah, this is the neighbor's view here. Right?
And that's the street, that's the site that has, you have three big trees there?
This site, yes, three grand trees. That's about, that's where most of the trees were that were, you know, met the criteria for grand trees. And there's three on this property that we are intending.
Plus. Plus.
Oh, oh.
No, plus you're gonna give us more trees than that when we see. Alright.
Just some of the existing brand trees on the property.
Okay. The windows are pretty consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually.
So how much of this is gonna be visible? I just want to be able to understand from the, from the plantings that you have. So you've got the Division street side, right?
Right.
Which is this rear view. How much of this perspective is going to be visible from Division based on what you intended, sort of nothing?
Because you're already starting. Four feet higher. Because.
Side wall.
You're four feet higher.
Right.
Then you're putting trees there, so you're not being seen, this is the back of the house, but you're not gonna see it. Could be walking on Division.
Okay.
Okay, understood.
It's also set back by the stones.
Yes, yeah.
The pool itself is sixty feet.
Yep, yeah.
And I would ask maybe seventy feet.
It's a lot.
Yeah, and I think you'd mentioned earlier, if I remember correctly, that that retaining wall would have six feet. Right, you're.
Six feet deep.
Below grade.
Below grade, six feet deep, and you were, you had indicated planting.
That's gonna come forward, we're sixteen.
It's gonna come forward towards the house, sixteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Which.
Allows plantings.
Then you plant.
Between, yeah.
So that will block, the plantings will block the people on Division seeing it. And then that would be the view if you can knock the trees down and see it.
Right, right.
But you're not gonna see that from Division. And like I, like she said, it's between seventy and a hundred feet.
Right.
And what's the square footage? Oh, sure, this one is four thousand eight.
No, that's the eleven one, that's five thousand one fourteen, right? Because you're looking at eleven, Marston?
This is, this is eleven.
Yeah, eleven.
Yeah, eleven's. Five thousand.
Five thousand one fourteen.
One one four.
Yes, five thousand, yes, I'm sorry, five thousand one.
It's the biggest.
Yeah, I think it is the biggest one.
Yes.
Yeah, this, this property is thirty eight thousand two hundred ninety.
Okay. I'm good, wanna look at the next one?
Yep.
Where we had nine, nine is the last one.
The planting, the site plan for this?
Val was gonna.
Val's gonna have.
Make a comment here in a second.
While we're looking, yes.
This is.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So very briefly, more universally. The hip roof on this house, as it faces the ocean. Is something, it's the tree line, which is, this is across from Pearson Hill. So this house could be quite visible as you come down Tremaine. You're gonna be looking at this house. And as I said, with the initial common theory, there's gable, 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 there's a nice rhythm. These houses as they come down the hill. This is, out of the four houses being presented, there are two that are hip roof houses. So the recommendation on the top of this drawing here is his hip roof house. This has no divisions in the glass. If you take a look at the suggestion on the bottom of the drawing. I'm suggesting to complete that, not that you'll see it, but it's something that's gonna give this house. A look at it, it's done in terms of, it's not plain glass. The importance of the changing it possibly to a hip roof, it's not something that would affect his design. But if you look at the front of the house on the second page of this. It's a much more attractive look that's in keeping with the neighborhood. Again, not to say that he can't build something that's different and unique. But I feel that it's more in keeping with the character and neighborhood. Just by dint of this type of roof line on the house. Of all the houses that he's presented, this could, this has much better potential to turn into something that's more pleasing. And again, the importance of this, as you walk down Pearson Hill, you will see the peaks on this house. If it completes itself with a ridge, it's in keeping with the character. And as the historian you say, okay, make your house look a little bit different. But I feel that it's important to harmonize with the village. And we feel that if we consider, does nothing to your core plan. And it's actually an easier roof to build. Roof is a lot easier. But I feel that that change with the peaks up a little bit higher, complete with that, it wasn't appropriate. In terms of the young man who spoke this evening, great comments about the trees. However, this applicant cannot clear cut the property, he can't cut every single tree out. Each one is being dealt with individually. So as I said, you need to swift. Anyone doesn't know that, you can look in the code book, stormwater. Each property is gonna soak up water on its own. In terms of the grading, it's flat. The school proposed a soccer field for that reason. If you look at the rear, it goes from a higher elevation downhill. Hits Marston, bottoms out, and then goes up steeper as it heads to Pearson Hill. That's the only corner where they need to build a retaining wall. Everything else is dead flat. Once you build a house, you grade it, five or three, it'll pitch your drains, no concern about flooding. It's not gonna do anything more to the roadside. So yes, there's concern, but it's unfounded to some degree. Be great if you could keep the trees, recommendation again, planting. Just identify if there's anything big, is it possible to shift any of these houses? Maybe not. But it'd be nice to know for the board that you can comment and say, look, you don't have to clear cut the entire property. Each house is gonna be dealt with individually. And why, Mr. Chairman, that you're doing this on case by case basis, says a lot to take in. And in terms of precedent, there are no more one acre parks in this village. They can't set precedent. Pretty much ninety percent of our property in this village, ten thousand square foot maximum. We're dealing with it in front of the zoning board all the time, people can't fit what they want, they have to ask for relief. Here, no relief is being sought in fit on the property. And he's done better than this in terms of, in terms of downsizing. There's already three large houses to nice up the road. They're in your face, this isn't a little unright sunken, they won't present themselves on this one strategy. But I like the roof line change if they would consider. That's the name, I'm looking at this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else we have online that wants to comment?
There's no one.
No, but I don't have, so the one reason why we did the hip. Why, because I wanted to make it different from the others and make each one different. However, is creeping the roof line. If it makes you guys happy, I don't have a problem. It doesn't change the house in any significant way. But again, if you have.
Alright.
Let's look at that.
Okay.
Let's look at.
Number nine.
Number nine.
Thank you, Val.
Yes, thank you for your comments. Nine, Marston. This property is also a property applying the Mars Street property, so it's a long apply. The block area here is thirty nine thousand thirteen square feet. It is. The proposed GFA is five thousand sixty two, which again creates thirteen percent of the. The building height is thirty two, thirty two feet nine inches. There's. This will be cedar shingles. The, the one of the comments that was made at last hearing. Was to change some of the color parameters so when we get to the right grades, I'll, I'll help out. On the, the elevations here. You see the front of this piece is on the top. We are at thirty two. Yeah, thirty two feet and nine inches on this, on this house. This is cedar shingles, cedar roof.
I guess it's.
And so you would be. This is the right side elevation, which faces the north, so that'd be the south side of the house. And here's the rear.
Sorry. Can we go back to, can we go back to, oh.
Okay, yeah, the front.
Off the side. That last thing, one question came was. The center segment of the house, I believe, is a white color. It was suggested that you can have the entire house. See the same color. So that was. The, the color parameters that they have here are. White to tan, it's, is it white or tan?
The siding is tan.
Okay.
The windows are.
Dark.
Like the, the dark when.
It's called, it's called jade.
Watch.
Neat.
Is what. That's it. So everything else is consistent.
So this is painted shingle or is this?
Yes, yes, there you go. But if you also look, the windows, can you zoom in a little bit on that, please? We did some cool things looking at those.
So, so this is, this is which side of that, this is not the answer.
This is behind my house, behind seven.
But this is the front door.
It's houses.
That's the front door that facing the opposite, because it's inside. It faces.
Well, it faces the common driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
So in this case, nobody sees this house. Because on all four sides.
There's nothing, there's no access to a street and so on, but, but there's visibility on the back side of this to the neighbor on the back, is there? That's the only, no.
Because there's trees from the neighbor. And there'll be trees. On that land, so you then give that, you know, another hundred feet. Inwards, it's essentially large lots, it would be all the way forward.
So can we see some other perspectives, other sides of the house?
On that one, if you want, keep the fence clean.
Yeah.
And again, the front, there's the entry on the driveway.
Looks like it's, it's like it's up in the Adirondacks, actually, it's like an empty house.
Yeah.
Forest.
Yeah.
At a girl. It's the back.
So, you can see the distance coming out behind it whilst not. Just forty-four feet to the wall.
Right.
And then probably another about ten feet or something like that.
It's an interesting house.
It is.
That's quirky.
I tried to put a little bit in each house.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? We're all okay with this house.
Is that the, is that a retaining wall? Is that what that is or is that just some?
No retaining walls on that thought.
So, what, what is that thing on the left by the pool or sort of as on the side? Or no, no.
No, it's like a white.
Behind where the trees are?
Oh, purple.
No, on the wall by where the green giants are?
Yeah, that's a purple.
Yeah. Oh.
Is that a fountain, a waterfall, water feature?
Oh, there is. No, on the house, there is no uh.
No water feature, okay.
Is there a reason why the front port, the front porch is white and the ones in the back are dark green?
Not really. The rendering bit of them.
Okay.
The fence, the, the actual posts are all dark green, but the.
Really?
This is not the most up to date rendering. The railings are all white.
I know that you like the quirkiness of the white porch kind of thing. I, I ki- I kind of like it, I think, probably even the green. I like the green.
I like the green. You might like the white. But please don't put yourself.
When you turn it around.
The posts and the fences of it are all just children.
Sorry. But you can see it was very simple.
What do I say?
You see the actual.
So, Jennifer's fault, she's saying.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'm so sorry. We went back and forth.
Thank you.
I like the green.
Oh, let's see.
They say they still like the green.
I like the green. I like all green.
Yeah.
No white.
I think the white on the front is.
Yeah. No white. It should go back to the front. Rendering.
Carrie's like.
Carrie's never been a shop here.
That's right.
You gotta do this. You gotta do this, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I like the, I would like it better green, like gray than yellow.
It feels like too much of a contrast.
Too much of a contrast, I agree.
Like, it's either.
Well, the beauty of this house is it's visible to nobody. So, if you like it green, we'll paint it green.
There you go.
And if you do red, I'll do red. But it's um. I kind of like it with the light, but I don't have a problem. I like green. I think it.
Good.
Uh, makes this house very unique. It's not going to appeal to everybody, but I think somebody will walk over and say they have that.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm looking for.
Yes. Just, just to go back to the roof line here, just as we discussed in eleven. Um, this also has the higher roof line, correct? Am I reading it the wrong?
They're roughly thirty-two.
I don't mean about the height, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the design. Is this also a, what is called a hip roof, correct? It is there, um, going back to Val's comment about, um, oh, who's coming back? No, I mean, I just think it's a, it's a very um important comment. And it does um address the, the way the house feels in terms of size. When you have a lower roof line, it doesn't feel as um, as large. Um, and I think that something similar might be able to be done on this house as well in terms of the roof. Yeah.
This is.
Yeah, this is what I. It's the same.
I back out with this property. Working at the rear elevation. Um, one of the things I keep to mind was, should it be a full A door? However, as the other piece pointed out, this, if you want a key map on the left, this house is not visible in terms of roadside elevation. It's very deep into the back of the property. The hip roof itself, um, you know, you could say that it's bringing the volume down. But we don't have any hipperds in the neighborhood. In fact, there's none. There's one on Madison, if you draw, you might find a few smaller order hip roof houses. So, it was just a thought. Looking at the front, um, I would much prefer the white is going to jump out. You know, anyone's going to hear if these trees um are all thinned out. It's going to pop out to you if you're thinking of a green color. But I think at this point, the board really should look with a bigger picture.
It's true.
It's a fantastic. You winded windows. On the recommendation that I just pointed out, there's no front door on this house per se. However, it's very deep back of the woods. Um, if it were facing the road, I would recommend it not to have storefront windows or doors on this porch, actually tap windows. Um, I think that's okay. You know, the way he has it proposed, there's a lot of glass. In terms of the stair tower, we don't have much architecture in the village with, you know, on it. If you look at this, that's what that ingredient is. Um, we've got two shapes that are sort of competing with each other. And of the four that you've seen tonight, this is a wall with asymmetrical house. We've got one mass that's bigger than the west side.
Right.
And I think it's the nature of the architecture here is deviated from simple elegance. And you're looking at something that's a little bit more quirky, the word was used. I, I think at the back is better organized in terms of, you know, the front, that's the visual. It's like, which of, you know, you need to fix that. Um, and so this one has a little bit more free widestance in terms of being different. But if it were facing the road, it's, how would this present? Like, someone else, then he would say, um, this board approved that type of house. I want to do it over here. I think you need to make uniqueness, make the distinction with your approval, that this can't be repeated on a different property. Because in general, this, these are one-off type houses. We're not going to get any of these in the village. You are going to have people upset. It did cause a lot of tension to the point where Mr. Trezor abandoned this project. So, there should be houses here. Always are like, sixteen houses on this property. And if you look back at a map of eighteen fifty, this whole neighborhood could be little houses, 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 houses. All on the property, there is a hill, but who knows if they were beginning that. Through Pearson High School was called Lottsworth Street. It was actually in the middle of the road, they could have put in more houses at this stage, not by all that. So, yes, houses belong here. But plenty of board for looking at these independently on case by case basis and finding merit with each one. And if they need to redirect, that's your job. And I trust that you're doing a good job with that. I find this very important because I live here. I'm going to die here. I'm going to look at these houses for the rest of my life. But I also want the character of the village to be kept. This is north to some degree. We've heard that from all of applicants. This is a national landmark, this north district. And if you like, the architecture needs to be sympathetic to that. Not take a departure from it, but resonate with the character of the village. I think that's about all I have to say. But thank you for your time. Thank you for saving up this meeting that we could express our fears and concerns. And I hope, yeah, and we can take these suggestions into consideration, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. We have one last person, I think, who wants to speak.
Can you hear me?
Um, I, I just want to say.
You said Elizabeth Gilbert?
Elizabeth Gilbert, G I L B L T, nineteen oh five. Um, when the gold of a watch factory built the townhouses that surround it, everyone was somewhat amazed at how large they were because the elevation of the street was not taken into account. Now, I know we have drawings of elevations that have been presented, but it's sort of hard to tell. And I think that's what you were getting at with more sport.
Procrassia, sorry, no worries, procrassia.
It would be really great to have a visual. And I know everyone's saying you're not going to see these houses, but somehow I feel like we are going to see the house because Marsden Street is up, even though they'll be down. Be nice to have a visual of how these are going to look from the street, not surrounded by these giants. And um, with the height shown, the height of Marsden Street, the height of the property, so that we can tell what, you know, how these big structures are going to look on the lot. And so, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments tonight?
The scary.
Someone's up. All right.
Hi, this is Lauren Friedman again, um, last comment for me. Uh, I just wanted to pick up on what, what Val was saying in the comment made by the applicant that this house is, is quirky and isn't going to appeal to everyone. I think it um will appeal to very few people. I happen to be right next door to it. And as I feared, I previewed at the beginning of the meeting, I, I feared that there might be two houses with the full frontage facing our lot. And that's exactly what the, the, the outcome of is of pivoting the houses um in that direction. So, we're going to face, you know, two five thousand square foot houses, looking at it from an eighteen hundred square foot house. Um, there was a comment made by the applicant that the neighboring houses wouldn't be able to see this. I find that really hard to believe because we're in a twenty-four year glass box house. Um, it's a mid-century house. Um, and I think there was, the comment was that we have trees on our property. We can't have trees on our property because there's this big ditch from our property to the next one, um, which is what fills um, when it rains. So, we can't have trees on our property. Our property is not going to shield us from this. Um, so I just, you know, I, I just want to ask the board to consider the, the impact on the direct immediate neighbors. You know, this doesn't appeal to anyone I know. Um, and at least what Val is saying should be taken into consideration, which is this should be made symmetrical. It could be made smaller in the process if you were to just adopt what's on the, the left-hand side and just replicate that so that you have a symmetrical house that would appeal to more people, probably more buyers. I think, you know, people want something that looks nice, um, not something that looks quirky or out of place.
Can I ask a point of reference? Wait, just a point of information here. Just to your, to your point, um, to the speaker Lauren, I, I just want to make sure I understood. This is the, this is the back of Marsden, so clearly the back of the property, which is eleven and nine. Those two houses are not the length of the, of the houses, but rather the sides, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, so from, if, if the speaker lives next door to us on division, then she would be.
Then she'd be facing.
The back of houses, not the front facades.
Right.
And towards side facades.
She's actually the side.
So, the side facades and two houses is what would be visible.
Right.
She's over to the side.
Right.
Be the smaller.
Very modern.
Smaller width for.
With the landscaping of a property, landscaping of a property. Again, I think. Minimal beauty of this property. She was saying it doesn't look everybody, she doesn't like it. However, somebody else will love it, just like a lot of these houses. One of the things that, we'll take a look at Val submitting another drawing. We'll take a look again, we can consider some of his tweets. He changed land very much. So, he tweaked it a little bit and we consider those tweets on our next presentation.
Just thank you for giving us that with, no problem. I think that the key, um, the key thing is, it's hard to redirect, you know, I mean, totally design. The roof speaks a lot to the architect here. You know, roof is such a critical ingredient in just finding the architecture. Um, Mrs. Friedman, who just has a look at the side of these houses, it's, I mean, have a look at the rear of the one that we have spoken about. But the um, tree line, there are some important trees. Only on these two parcels in the back, there's a very old group that's mature. I'm not sure the fact that we take them into consideration.
But that's there, the trees are.
Because I look at the pool, there happens to be a beautiful poplar tree that must be a good for, for in terms of. But um, it's up to the board to look at that, I think, with a critical eye to some degree. And if it's possible to move, we actually have septic systems, it's a pretty smaller property. As you look at these little houses that all need septic upgrade, you can replace septic right within the driveway itself. There's no more needs of a tree to the roadside. You know, the doors, just put the septic there, you drive right on top. But I just want to finish up with landscaping, you know, can be looked at from that perspective? If it's possible, save some trees. There is, it's a wild grouping of trees that sort of borders this street, this property. And I think out of respect for the few people that surround this, that would be helpful. My comment about the second floor balcony is because conversations do carry. And people, you know, who viewed that during the pandemic, I'm not sure it's a New York thing to be up a trauma like on your phone. But it happens. And literally changed, you know, some working class or was working class. You know, that run ten o'clock. And everything changed during the pandemic. And these balcony sign themselves to inclusion and privacy and also more chatter. This is not the owner's house, but it will turn into somebody's house where it's conducive to activity. And I also think we need to give a bit of the applicants to consider just a little bit of fun to move less this more on the design and make it appealing for potential buyer. Because people are coming to that power for simple houses, not returns.
Well, you know, to your point, a lot of these properties have been used for rentals. And those are the least considered people in the world.
Oh, wow.
So.
I think, I think Mrs. Friedman wants to kind of point.
I just wanted to confirm, um, it sounded like in clarification to my question, the response was that the houses, I was going to be facing the side of the houses so that when you're looking from um, towards Madison, the two houses are going to be fronting, facing.
Each other.
Each other.
Off the driveway.
Vision Street will have the wide side of the house and the narrow side will be facing, let's say, Marsden and Intermain, right?
Alright.
Correct.
That's right, okay. Okay. Glad to hear that.
Okay, I think with this, I'll entertain a motion to end the meeting.
Well, we have to.
We have to close our public session.
Yeah.
Okay.
Making a motion to close during the meeting.
To adjourn the meeting, okay.
We don't have to, um, to table every house?
No.
Okay.
Can I speak? Can I speak?
Sure, did you, please do.
I did, I just wanted to say, I watched the whole meeting and I found it very informative. And that there are so many good suggestions made. And it also seems that there's a lot of work to be done to get this to the point where anybody can accept it. I mean, there, there's landscape issues. There are architectural issues. There are water issues. It just seems like, um, more, I guess more needs to be done. And uh, I greet you from Ming and I ate giant lobster from lunch.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion?
For the, um, for the record, our next meeting, uh, is available before it's.
Okay.
Do you think that we should, will we be able to do these four plus whatever else is regular? Or are we good having this?
It's a regular meeting.
Having some, okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
She made the motion. She made the motion, all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Back of our next meeting.